Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, October 21st, 2024. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, happy Monday, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st edition of the Dartmouth School Committee meeting. Hope everyone had a fabulous weekend. Just a reminder before we get started to please, for those of you in the audience, please silence any cell phones or electronic devices. Roll call, please.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
John Nunes.
Yep. Thank you very much. Looks like we are all here. Also, just another reminder that this meeting is being videotaped by our Dartmouth High School Media Department for rebroadcast on Dartmouth Community Television Channels 9 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00, Friday at 6:00 a.m., Sunday at 8:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Also, the meeting will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 18 on the following days, Monday and Saturday at 12:00 p.m. and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. And as always, you can also watch us at youtube.com/DHSTVmedia. Thank you, everyone. At this time, the school committee has allotted 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. Yeah, seeing no one approach the microphone, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, approval of minutes, the regular session minutes of October 7th, 2024. We're included in your packets.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mrs. Amorall. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our next up would typically be our student representative report. Unfortunately, our student rep could not be with us here this evening due to some other obligations. So we're moving on into old business, continuing discussion of the FY '26 budget. I'll turn this over to Dr. Saber McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. And I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Kylie, who I know has been putting in some really tremendous effort in preparing the budget, not only this one, as you know, but we'll continue to remind folks that we just closed out last year's budget, working on and working on this year's budget and the following year's budget. And so, Mr. Kylie is going to update you as to where he is.
Thank you, Dr. Saber McGuire. So, brief update. We've been working with our administrative staff in the schools to help create the budget plan for fiscal year '26. We have a budget subcommittee meeting scheduled for Monday, the 28th, at 5:00. So, we will, our plan is to have some preliminary numbers for you for discussion. Again, really, just as very preliminary and not fully reflective of where the district is going to go, but enough that we can move the conversation forward and begin to, you know, create a plan. So, we'll be doing that Monday.
And so, just to add on to that, as Mr. Kylie mentioned, we've been sitting with principals, we've sat with every principal at this point. We're also working at the central office level to talk about the needs of the district, obviously, throughout, especially as it relates to curriculum and instruction, which you're going to hear about us talk about where we are tonight. You'll hear an update. So, lots of meetings going on, so it's not just Mr. Kylie behind closed doors, although he does a lot of that kind of work that he needs to do, but at the same time, it's also about getting out and talking to folks in the schools to see really what the needs are, so that when we present our budget, it's definitely a needs-based budget, and then we go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, thank you both. Any questions for Mr. Kylie or Dr. Saber McGuire? And we'll be looking forward to meeting with the both of you at the Budget Subcommittee meeting on Monday.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, under new business, we have the Superintendent's Evaluation, and I will turn it over to Mr. Nunes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we've been talking about the Superintendent's Evaluation, and unfortunately, I think, as the old saying goes, everybody's familiar with the gentleman named Murphy and his laws, and anything that can go wrong will go wrong. Mine, I had computer issues, mine sitting in there, type of deal with the holiday and every, you know, people out of town and schedules, it just literally got away from us and we were unable to get together. Nobody's fault, nobody's issues, it's just the way the schedules all work. Mrs. Amorall and I have been talking, and we will get together this week and put it together, and we'll have it for November 4th. So, my apologies to the committee, to the superintendent, but
No problem. Thank you. I understand.
It wasn't ready, and it's, you know, we need to make sure this is right, because this is an important document, so.
Agreed.
We'll take care of it.
Great. Thank you.
No, thank you for that update, Mr. Nunes. Thank you both for your time. I certainly understand that things can get away from you. Mrs. Amorall?
And I just want to thank the committee for submitting their evaluations to us. Very thoughtful, based on the word count visually, but when we get together, we'll mitigate, put it together.
We'll modify.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to turn it right back over to Dr. Saber McGuire for Superintendent's Goals.
So, hopefully, you received the packet in your Friday update, and at the same time, we're going to put it up here for our presentat-- do I need to do something? I do have this.
There you go.
This is what we call in the field, quiet waiting. Wait time, very important in the field of education. So, thank you. You did a really nice job, school committee. So, again, it says goal-setting and evaluation. I look forward to the November 4th meeting, but at the same time, I thought it was important that we move forward with having an opportunity to present to you what goal-setting looks like for the 2024, 2025 school year. So, as we've discussed in the past, goal-setting is meant to be a collaboration with the school committee, and it's to develop goals that are based upon our core values, our vision, our mission, and the long-term needs of the district. And so, hopefully, as we go through this this evening, you'll see that those items are those very important, I think, the focus of our work is reflected in the goals, in my goal-setting. Now, the goals are meant to serve as a starting point for the evaluation process, and what I'm excited about, if you can say excited when you're connecting it to evaluation, is being in this place this year as opposed to last year, where I was putting up goals and not really sure where I was going with them. And at the end of the year, when I looked at them, I thought, oh, wow, well, we really did have a roadmap to meet those goals. And again, in collaboration with our school committee. And the successful attainment of goals really does depend upon collaboration between principals, our central office, our district leadership team, and our educators in the field. So, all of those are important folks that contribute to the realization of goal, of actually meeting goals. So, for Goal One for this year, I am proposing that by May of 2025, the Dartmouth Public Schools will be fully engaged with implementing the 2025 through '29 District Strategic Plan, and that will be in alignment with the proposed timelines that are outlined in the published plan. We actually had a meeting today with the folks from TLA who are putting together the final touches on our plan, and we expect to have that ready to publish by mid-November, making a few small tweaks to things like the letter and actually some other, some other just additions that we wanted to make. For instance, we wanted a photo of the school committee, so we have a photographer here this evening. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Tebow, and we're going to get some photos so that we can make sure that you are reflected throughout the District Strategic Plan as well. So, the plan itself will be presented to the One Dartmouth Community in a variety of forums to build a community-wide understanding of the mission, vision, core values, theory of action, focus area, objectives, initiatives, and action steps. And we'll talk about how we're going to report out to you on an ongoing basis as we get further along in the Superintendent's Report. So, next, we have the implementation of high-quality instructional materials, and so, this is one of our priority goals, if you remember, and it's about increasing access for all students to high-quality instructional materials in alignment with the District Strategic Plan, and this should result in growth and achievement for all students using multiple measures. And at some point, as we start to talk about those measures, we'll be introducing you to the different, the various measures that we use, whether those be formative or summative assessments, and talking about what we mean when we use that language. So, for Goal Three, I have the participation in Year Two of the New Superintendent Induction Program. This year, I have to say, I'm happy to see that part of the work that we're doing together is around data analysis. We have a very clear focus on instructional leadership, strategy development, and it's about engaging in the work with other superintendents, new superintendents, and experienced superintendents. It's a nice balance in the space, and it's really important, I think, an important part of the work for me has been the opportunity to collaborate with my superintendent coach, as you remember, Dr. Maureen LaCroix, who's been a wonderful support. And just this past week, she was with us at our principals' meeting, and so she does spend time in the district and does have a good understanding of the work that we're doing here. So, next, again, like I said to you earlier, a little bit different from last year, when this wasn't part of my introduction to the superintendent goals, but this year, as we put our packet together for you as school committee members, we did look at the ratings for each one of the standards, and what I've done is similar to what I submitted to you for this year's evaluation, and that is just in red. I've taken certain indicators, and I've just made the font red so that you could see that, that that would be a focus for us for this year. And hopefully, what you'll see is that these highlighted indicators are well-aligned to the District Strategic Plan. And so, the very first one is ensures all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. That's directly connected to the idea of bringing in high-quality, research-based resources that allow teachers to do that and to have that type of curriculum at their fingertips to help, to assist them in their instruction. Next, I have for Standard Two, again, similarly, environment. If you look at one of, I'll just pick one out, it's about developing and executing effective plans, procedures, routines, operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. And so, I ask that as we're presenting through the Superintendent's Report, and you'll hear us actually chiming in, saying, this is an example of this. So, we're trying to make those really direct connections to the work we're doing, to the, not only to the evaluation process, but more importantly, to the standards that we all recognize, or the standards that do in fact represent the work that you want to be happening in your school district. Next, we have Standard Three, which is around family and community engagement, again, one of our clear focus areas, and not something we lifted from this page, just something that came up organically as we did this work with our District Strategic Planning Team. That this was an area of focus, aligns perfectly here, and here we have, again, sharing responsibility. I'll just choose one of those that I've highlighted in red, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. And again, as we're talking about this, you'll hear us referencing, referencing these standards. And finally, Standard, Standard Four, which is around professional culture. I just would pick one out, and I'm going to go to 4E, shared vision, successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. Hopefully, as you, and I know that you've read through the District Strategic Plan, again, a few of you participated in its development, this language aligns well with the language in our District Strategic Plan, and making those very, again, clear connections, I think, is really important as we move through this work. And so, that is it for the, this year's proposed goals and focus indicators. And so, I think the committee does take a vote on this, Mr. Oliver, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that is correct. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Saber McGuire. Questions, comments from my colleagues? Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Saber McGuire. These are very concise and accurate, you know, things that we have talked about, you know, and Mr. Tebow and Ms. Paveo have talked about, you know, especially with the curriculum, you know, bringing new math, new, you know, elementary items into it, type of deal, in the high schools.
Yes.
So, this really starts bringing it all together.
Great.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? I will, I will just share my thoughts, in which I think this is very well-aligned. I appreciate how it's been broken down and the indicators that you shared with us, and I appreciate moving forward, how the work to tie in when you're presenting in at different points in time, that this is an example of such, such an indicator. So, I have no concerns. I'm excited to continue moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Superintendent's Goals for '24, '20, school year '24, '25.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Beckwith. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Obstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the MASC Resolutions Discussion. So, if you remember, everyone, at the last school committee meeting, I asked if the committee would be interested. First of all, we could have, get a volunteer to represent the Dartmouth School Committee at the annual convention, as well as the delegation assembly, and Ms. Beckwith, she respectfully accepted the request or volunteered. So, we certainly appreciate that. So, what I'd like to do is, first of all, did everyone have a chance to look through them for the most part?
Kind of recuse them and write notes at home.
Okay. So, there is obviously a lot of wording on this. So, if the committee's okay with this, I really don't want to read the whole resolution for each one of them. We can certainly discuss, I obviously have a discussion if you'd like. The, for those of you watching at home, for those of you in the audience, this is where the Massachusetts Association of School Committees each year at the annual convention, they put together, they have a resolutions committee, and they will put forward resolutions to all of the districts in the state that are part of MASC, which is, I think, just about all of them, with the exception of maybe a half dozen districts that are not part of MASC, in which the districts are, then they bring it back to their, to their committees. The committees have a discussion across each city and municipal, town municipality in the, in the state, and then we elect a delegate, which we did, and they will take that back to the delegate assembly, where they will vote on our behalf and have conversations at that assembly. And then, the idea is MASC is advocate, they advocate on behalf of school committees across the state on Beacon Hill, and they will, they'll certainly do that on our behalf to try to get the House and Senate and all of our elected officials to hopefully take, take a stance in some of these actions, one way or the other. So, with that, any questions? All right. Resolution One, Development of an Alternative to the High-Stakes MCAS Test. This, this resolution was sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors, and my understanding is the way it's read, and please jump in if you feel differently, is that this is a resolution that's looking to completely dismantle the MCAS and come up with a different assessment tool. Does anyone understand that differently than what I just stated?
Yeah.
So, this is a little bit different than the article that's out there right now, because the article, one of the questions, I forgot which question number, but the question actually says, thank you, Dr. Tebow, is for making the MCAS requirement for graduation. So, for those of you watching, that question has to do with the MCAS requirement for graduation. All this is, is this is a resolution that school committees across the state are just voting on to see if they can move it forward one way or the other for advocacy, policy advocacy at the, or law advocacy up at the State House. Questions, thoughts, comments?
I guess I'll start. First and foremost, from the get-go, I have been one who, for the most part, has been opposed to the MCAS, okay, from, you know, to make it a requirement for graduation. I remember having a very serious discussion at a school committee meeting with Mr. King and Dr. Kelly when he was superintendent, Mr. King was the principal, and just saying, no, you know, I do away with it, because, you know, I think of my, in all seriousness, I think of myself personally, and I'm a lousy, I know the material, I'm a lousy test taker, always have been, type of deal. So, to make a test, the wherewithal for somebody to graduate and something of that nature, no. You want to leave it in there as a base and such, I'm fine with that, but not as a graduation requirement. If they're looking to revamp, you know, and change the tests around, I'm all for it.
Okay. So, my understanding is that this would just put another stick, it would develop another type of test, or another type of way of assessing the students. This has nothing to do with the graduation requirement, because that's already on the ballot.
Yeah. So, I'm unclear. I agree with Mr. Nunes that it should not be a requirement for graduation, but that's not the point here. Could there be a better test? I mean, it's just a-- I mean, it's just a, a data point. What do they think they need to improve on? Maybe I didn't read deep enough, but, um, how did they think that they were going to make it better? And I'm sorry, I didn't do enough research on that. Did anybody else get, um, understand what they hope to improve? Certainly, it's not going to replace a graduation requirement, but is it going to capture, uh, gained knowledge better?
So, so one of the things on them, go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm still reading through.
Okay. One of the pieces that I will say that's in here is that it urges the state, this resolution would urge the state legislature to launch a comprehensive evaluation to investigate the extent of biases pertaining to MCAS testing and make those results public. So that is part of it as well.
They're also suggesting that MCAS has restricted the curriculum and narrowed the focus of education.
Yeah, you're teaching to the test versus teaching.
Exactly, that's, that's my interpretation.
So they want to create a test that's going to be broader?
Broader, um, less biased.
I could live with that.
And more considerate of all types of learners. That's my interpretation of it.
See, I could live with that.
Me too.
Okay.
So unless there's any other discussion?
I, I would just add, um, I don't, I don't think I've ever been unclear about my dislike for it. I don't think I've ever been unclear about my dislike for MCAS. However, um, an alternate test, right, um, is an alternate test with its own, with it, with its, you know, since this, this is separate from the discussion around having it be an additional competency determination. And I guess it does include the assessment of, uh, the study. We all like studies, right?
Of any potential biases.
Of biases, but it, it does also sort of talk about the purpose of this to, um, to really redefine what the, what a successful system looks like. Like here in Dartmouth, one Dartmouth, it really talks about public education nurturing and supporting students from, once they enter our doors at three years old in preschool up through, uh, graduation. And, and, and that isn't necessarily what MCAS does currently. Again, separate from the discussion of it being the ballot question. You know, my, my apprehension is that, how long is this study? I don't know if you have more to share on that, and, um, just the reality that another formal test is, is going to be the same sort of nature of having its flaws and its, and its benefits.
Well, it doesn't suggest a timeline. It says, put a moratorium on immediately. And then the second thing is, it doesn't say another test, it says alternative. So, again, it's, it's fairly vague. As a lot of resolutions are.
To make things a little more complicated.
Gee, thanks.
My, my other cons, my concern, I'm not a big MCAS fan, uh, but my concern is it will, we're just coming, we're finally out of the pandemic a couple of years, we're finally getting solid data, uh, starting to get solid data. And if we were to put a moratorium on the MCAS and, and they do studies, that's going to put, you know, hi, will that stop progress in districts as far as reporting out? We're reporting those, reporting that, those data analytics. So I'm, go ahead, Mr. Noon.
Yeah, uh, just to, to, to follow up on that, and I understand where you're coming from with that, uh, Mr. Oliver. But I think, you know, it would then beho, uh, behoove, uh, DESI to, uh, to come up with something or to work with, you know, MASC and the Superintendent's Association to see what they can come up with for some type of test and/or testing that is still going to keep, you know, tabs on how all our students are doing, type of deal. I mean, you have to, you have to challenge the students. I totally understand that and, and such. But you can't have them, and again, just me, uh, you know, thinking about, oh, my God, am I going to, you know, what happens if I don't pass this test, you know? And how many times am I going to have to take it and such? So that, that's, that's my concern.
Okay. So what is the committee's pleasure? Do we want to officially vote on these, or do you, we just want to? I don't know, because I haven't, this is the first time that I'm, in my memory, that we're doing this.
And I agree with you there, because we've never done this before. We've never done this before, to my, in my knowledge, so.
And, and I hate to say I'm not as prepared as I should for this discussion. Um, and if indeed it means that we would not use MCAS in the interim while they're developing other things, I would be, I would be against, like, stopping MCAS tomorrow, because I agree with you, Mr. Oliver, that, um, we need to see where we've been and where we're going. I'm all for them developing a better test with less biases, but, um, we need something to use in the interim.
Does anyone know if, uh, while we're, I'm, I'm there, if we can offer an amendment to any of these resolutions?
I believe.
I would assume you could.
At the assembly that you can, yes.
So I'm happy to offer a resol, uh, an amendment that says, we don't want to enact a moratorium, but we are for looking into alternatives.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I would support that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm just, it's the chairman, I'm just thinking, uh, if we put a call into, you know, if, if Ms. Beckworth is able to, or somebody puts a call to Glenn Kuchar, and that, and just see what the, what the process is for putting amendments on the floor with these resolutions.
Sure.
That'd be great.
You know, just.
Okay. So do we, any need for an official vote here, or?
No.
Didn't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm good. So we're, we're good with that.
Okay, so vote yes if there's an amendment.
If there, yes.
Okay.
To amend the moratorium, so that there's no moratorium.
And if no amendment, vote no or abstain?
Choice is yours. No, seriously.
Give me too much power to want.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
Yes, because things could change on the floor.
Yep, yeah.
Things could change on the floor, so.
And you're representing.
You're representing us, and however, however it comes out.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, if you read these and have other thoughts, just email me and let me know.
All right, thank you. Uh, resolution two, increase compulsory attendance age, sponsored by the Brockton School Committee. So it is my understanding that currently, and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the current age to sign yourself out of school is sixteen?
It is.
It is sixteen years of age. Um, this resolution would increase that minimum age to eighteen. So whereas a growing body of research indicates that increasing the minimum school leaving age to eighteen not only increases high school graduation rates, but also significantly improves the life outcomes of students who otherwise would have become dropouts. Comments, questions? Uh, everyone has it, it's well in front of them. That's the.
I'm, I, I think you should be in school until eighteen, unless you've tested out.
Agreed.
I support that.
Agreed.
We're all good on that?
We're all good on resolution two. We're all good on resolution two. Uh, resolution three, safe storage of firearms, sponsored by the Framingham School Committee. So this was an interesting one. Essentially, the way I understand this, and please, anyone, uh, interject, is that, uh, they're looking that, uh, where is it? It's a long one, too.
It is.
So it looks like the district, they're looking for a resolution that will allow the district to, the districts to have to put out some kind of, um, notice to parents about, uh, safe firearms, firearm storage practices. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, superintendent and principals would communicate to parents, guardians of the importance of securing firearms in the home.
Certainly couldn't hurt, sounds like it would help.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this would be like for at home. This has got nothing to do with.
Nope, right.
Okay.
Nothing in school.
Nothing in school, okay, no, that's, yes, the answer, in that case, yes.
So, just, I'll read the first one. Uh, whereas safety and well-being of our students, teachers, and staff is a top pri, priority in schools and keeping them safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at each of our school sites. And then it goes on, whereas, whereas, whereas. Um, so, but that's, that's the gist of it, what Ms. Beckworth said. Mrs. Amor.
There, there is noting, um, and I think it's like the last paragraph before the reference.
Yes.
Data that says, that talks about, um, gosh, getting old, my eyesight is terrible. Uh, collaboration with, uh, law enforcement. Uh, I just, I put forth, like, what, what if for our district, this looks something like, something embed into our already occurring natural collaboration relative to school safety? Perhaps it's, could it be something that we, um, document within our plan? In addition to, maybe there are other things that we want to remind folks about that might be helpful relative to family and community engagement. You know, and, and as opposed to just this letter from the superintendent talking about. I don't know.
Yeah, just wondering if when we put, when central office and the schools put their student handbook together, there can be a, a reference in there to it. You know, more so as, as a reminder to parents and guardians about, you know, gun safety and making sure they're, they're locked, they've got the trigger locks, et cetera, et cetera.
That would be something that we can work together on for sure.
You know, with the, you know, with, with the help of the police department and so, you know, that, I'm sure they'll, they would jump on that in a heartbeat, just.
So the way this resolution is written right now, are we in favor of it? Or are we thinking it needs to be amended or against it?
I think, I think it's okay where it is, my personal opinion.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
I mean.
I, I am in favor of it. It's, it's just, as someone who, if you have a firearm safety, if, if you have a firearms identification card, you have to take a firearm safety course. These are things that unfortunately, like, really, people should already know.
It doesn't hurt to reinforce.
It doesn't hurt, okay.
And, yep, some of our families may have illegal firearms, and they haven't taken the course. And they don't have their, whatever, you know? Let's, it's, we're just educating the families.
I, I don't think it can do any harm.
No.
Because it's just another message.
It's just another communication.
From another source.
Sure.
And I think most parents would not be offended that they're being told to do something they know they're supposed to do.
Yeah. It's encouraging.
Encouragement.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't disagree. I just also think that for us to think about, it, it sort of opens the door for us to think about other ways to document different things within our health and wellness or within our safety planning.
Yeah.
Such as this firearms reminder. If you do, this is what you need to do. If you have prescription drugs, you, this is what you need to do. So health and safety, wellness sort of reminders. It just inspires for me, like, thinking more globally about ways in which we can help communicate to our families and our community, um, some good information.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, resolution four, school bus stop-arm surveillance act and enforcement penalties, sponsored by the puberty school committee. Essentially, uh, I'll read a few of these. Whereas it is against the law in Massachusetts to pass a stopped school bus with a stoparm extended and flashing lights while student passengers embark and disembark on the bus. Unless witnessed by a police officer, the penalties for passing a stopped school bus are minimal. The danger of the passengers is extraordinary and can prove fatal. So at the end of the day, uh, we are looking, therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts, MASC calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation to pass into law the ability for cities and towns to install on all school buses live digital video detection monitoring systems for the purpose of enforcing violations against the owner of a motor vehicle whose vehicle failed to stop for a school bus, for him required to do so by law. I'm in favor of that.
Yes, I am. My only, my only thought, and I'll put my finance hat on for a second here, is what's the cost per bus and, you know?
Yeah.
When the bids come back, you know, oh, yeah, and by the way, we have however many buses, and it was five hundred dollars a bus, so there's, you know, an extra charge.
Sure.
But the overall concept is perfect. I don't have a problem with it.
And I, I don't have a problem with it, except that as long as it's clear that it's for this purpose and not used. You know, we're collecting information that should only be used for this purpose.
And, and I would add, I am in support, and I, and I do like that. And I also would add, um, and I, because I don't see it in here, um, public notices that this is in effect. And what, by that I mean, um, I do not have off-street parking in my tiny little postage-stamped property in Dartmouth. Uh, and, uh, a nice young man sideswiped my brand-new car and came to the door, my husband, on a Saturday morning, and let us know. And while I like to presume that he, his intent was to, that he felt compelled, I also do realize he probably thought we had a door camera. Um, and so knowing that those cameras are there would also deter the bad activity, not just catching them after the fact, sort of prompting them by, um, that accommodation to know, we're watching you, you need to abide, it's good for the safety of our students, but also there are cameras on you, and we'll get you for this purpose.
For this purpose.
Specifically.
Yeah.
So.
So, so does that need to be an amendment? Is that clear that it is just for this purpose, or does that verbiage have to be added?
Yeah, it does say for the purpose.
But it doesn't say the sole purpose.
It doesn't say the sole purpose. I could.
I would be all for it if it was clear that somebody couldn't request the footage to use for some other reason.
Well, I think it goes into the same circumstance. I don't know where it is with, uh, Freedom of Information Act request. Maybe Mr. Kylie can help us out with this. Can anyone request video, just anyone request video, um, off any of our, uh, transportation fleet?
Good question. I, I don't know if any of that would fall under the Freedom of, Freedom of Information Act. It may. We already have video cameras on the buses, and obviously, we utilize those. And we have a system in place to address folks who pass school buses. Um, pretty effective one, I think. I mean, there is already a fine for passing a school bus, um, up to two thousand dollars, and, and you can lose your driver's license. Um, so, I mean, I, I've got to say, I mean, this. So, I mean, I, I've got to say, I mean, this may improve things, I, I don't know. Um, we don't get a lot of cars passing school buses, but the Dartmouth police are um excellent at uh typically when folks will go to the extent to pass a school bus, it's not the first or only time that they're going to do that. It's a s- usually a pattern, it's usually in a specific location and somebody who is anxious about getting to work on a daily basis or something and uh pretty typically, they can, the, the police department enforces that um and can, can catch them. If you have a repeat offender, which, so, um, you know, just so you know, we, we are actively enforcing.
Sure.
Enforcing that rule. I don't know, I suppose that it may be public information.
I'm fine. I'm good, I'm, but I'm good with the resolution.
As it stands?
As it stands, yeah.
I can offer the amendment of sole purpose.
Yeah, and, and I agree also, again with Mr. Nunes, the cost is an issue, of course, there should be no cost that we should be worried about when we're talking about the safety of our students.
Right.
No, I'm, it, I'm not, it, it, that part, I'm, you're absolutely right, it's, but it's just in this day and age of budgets, it's one more thing.
It's one more thing.
You know, that type and such, so that's, again, my my two cents.
I'm for it.
Okay.
It, just so it's clear for, that it's only for that purpose.
Okay.
Agreed. Resolution five, aligning taxing authority with the required local contribution. Would you like me to read this out?
This one's confusing.
It is a little confusing and um, and we can certainly, if they're, if they're too confusing, we can just certainly skip over them and we don't, you don't vote on them. Did you have any?
No, I, and again, I, you know, I've got to go back and reread it.
Okay, so where.
We can talk about it.
Whereas Massachusetts General Law, uh, Chapter Seventy establishes a required local contribution which defines a minimum appropriation for education and whereas one element of determining the required local contribution is a local effort from property wealth determined using municipalities' equalized valuation. And whereas the ability of municipalities to raise revenue is constrained by Prop Two and a Half, which limits the increase in levy limits by two and a half plus new growth, and whereas the state, the total statewide required local contribution in F Y twenty-two was six, uh, yeah, that's six billion eight hundred twenty-seven million six hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and it goes on. Um, and then in uh F Y twenty-three, it was seven million one hundred sixty-six, seven billion one hundred sixty-six million seven hundred forty-four thousand two hundred ninety-one, ultimately a four point nine seven percent increase. Whereas the total statewide local contribution in F Y twenty-three uh was, and, all right, I've already uh, I'm gonna skip over that, whereas the total statewide required local contribution in F Y twenty-six was seven billion five hundred sixty-six million three hundred two thousand one hundred sixteen dollars. And the F Y twenty-five preliminary Chapter Seventy-eight and net school spending requirements released by D E S I is projected to be seven million, seven billion nine hundred sixty-nine million four hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two, an increase of five point three percent. So whereas increases in required local contribution in, in excess of two and a half percent strains the budgets of municipalities without excess levy capacities, I think we can all agree on that. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation that would increase a municipality's levy limit by the amount of increase of the required local contribution in, in excess of two point five percent, granting the municipality the ability to raise revenues mandated by Chapter Seventy. So.
Confusing, but.
Okay, so they're looking, they're looking for, they're looking for a way to get around two and a half.
Yes.
For uh, for the uh for the, for the.
Tax limit.
Yeah, the, the uh local contribution increase.
That's what they're looking for. Can I defer to, to Mr. Kylie?
It's a pretty complicated proposal and this is not, even though it sounds um quite specific, it really isn't. Um, so in terms of its impact on us, I don't believe it would have any impact on us um anytime soon, at least, probably the next ten years or so, at least. What they're talking about is districts that are at the levy limit, which we are not, um, so I, I think there's no impact for us, um, I mean, looking at Prop Two and a Half, um sure, that's, I mean, so, that, that could have an impact, but this actual change would not have a direct impact on us in the short term.
And I, if you mentioned it, I, I missed it, who?
Arlington School.
Arlington.
Arlington.
Arlington's good, never mind. What's hell doing now, okay.
So I, so the way this is written right now, to the best of your understanding, Mr. Kylie, without putting you on the spot, this would not affect Dartmouth.
In the short, at least the, you know, next, I don't know, probably ten years or so at least, we, it, it should not, yeah.
But in ten years, it may benefit us, may.
Maybe, maybe, there's a lot that, yeah, who knows?
Good lord.
What's the committee's pleasure?
It would be an exception to Prop Two and a Half.
How about, let's just abolish Prop Two and a Half?
You want to put a resolution forward?
Can we do that?
Fifty-nine twenty-one would go bye-bye's, thank you. I I understand where they're coming from, type of deal, but I also wonder how many communities this would impact or would be able to take advantage of it, type of deal, okay? Me personally, I'd, personally, I'm gonna, you know, abstain on that one.
I would try to spend a little more time on it and talk at our next school meeting on it, I, cause I, I am not clear on this one at all.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we have time, so.
Yeah.
We, we can take it back and if we want to, you know, do one or two more and then take the rest at the next meeting, you know, cause there's a lot here.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, this is the toughest one yet, for sure.
Mrs. Ammaral?
Yeah, and I, what, what I think of in, in reading this is, you know, yes, it's not gonna affect us um right now, but is it gonna hurt us eventually? And but what I mean by that is all of the work that we're putting into collaborating with our town and seeing us as one Dartmouth and part of the bigger picture and recognizing that there are real other issues going on in our town, is this, would this hurt us um and put us in a position that uh requires the town to, yes, fund us at a higher level, that's great, but at the cost of something else that's really important in town as well, I think we're doing a great service by bringing everyone to the table, engaging folks within our strategic plan and letting them see themselves in it, council on aging, other entities, um, and town administration. We've got representatives from our finance committee here who are really invested in, in what we're, we're um in our, in the content of our meetings and what we're doing as a body, um, and so that just is my concern is while there isn't an immediate impact, it could, it, it, it may impact, so I would just concur that um perhaps is dialogue that Mary hears that can inform how she approaches it or we bring it back.
Okay.
I, I would say let's decide on November fourth.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine.
So we'll take Resolution Six back, we'll take that back up.
That's five.
I'm sorry, five, six is the next one, we will take uh Resolution Five, thank you, Ms. Coughlin. All right, well, Resolution Six, support of legislation to improve the physical health of rural school uh districts. Whereas rural school districts in Massachusetts face daunting threats of their financial sustainability and thus their ability to provide rural students with the same quality of educational uh opportunity enjoyed by students in other parts of the states, I should mention this is sponsored by and makes sense. The community, the districts, uh, the, the school committees of Deerfield, Deerfield, Sutterland, Watley and Frontier Regional School. Uh, whereas the Commonwealth has rightly touted the state's significant increase in funding edu- uh, following the passage of the two thousand nineteen Student Opportunity Act. However, the most needy rural declining enrollment districts have received less than one percent of that increase in funding. So uh, therefore be it resolved that M A S C urges the legislature to pass comprehensive legislation encompassing all recommendations from the legislative, legislative commission on the physical health of rural schools report, sustainable future for rural schools. Thoughts, comments, questions, there is a number of things that, in the middle of that, but I don't want to bore the committee.
That's gonna come back to number, in my opinion, comes back to number five with the uh, the levy limit and the contri- the local contribution to the budget, that's what, that's how that, I think, is coming into play. Those are all, and also, you know, those are all small towns out in
Right.
Western part, out, you know, Amherst Springfield way, so.
It seems like everybody is hurting financially.
Yep.
And some schools are pushing for how they can help themselves.
Right.
Whereas we need a, a comprehensive solution that can help all schools in the Commonwealth. I'm not saying that the rural schools in our Commonwealth don't need help, I'm just saying that there really needs to be uh a change in the way we fund schools across the boards syst- systemically, um, because we're just gonna have more and more resolutions that are certain school districts are gonna be asking the state for more money for this because of their particular issues.
You're certainly right, because I, how much money has the Dartmouth School District received from the Student Opportunity Act since two thousand?
Essentially none.
Right, that's what I mean, right.
Exactly.
We're not that, we're, we're, you know, we're a suburb.
I was gonna make a joke about, I think, parts of Dartmouth could be classified as rural.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, we are a big town for sure.
We are, yeah, and um, and, you know, this sort, I, I wish this was broader to, to include, um, was the Student Opportunity Act a move forward and a good step, sure. Did it hurt us? Sure, um, and so I, I, I just don't feel inclined to support this resolution unless it included other elements of those that were left behind because of the Student Opportunity Act who have real pressing um issues, yes, we have a low tax base, yes, to a lot of different things, but we also are in need and um we have high needs and uh I just don't, I just I feel like this is too narrow of a focus, to the point that you just made. Everyone's gonna be coming to the table, me, no me.
Right, right.
That's, they've, they've, basically, I think they have to get their legislative, their legislatures, you know, to work, you know, to get the state to, to help them out, type of deal.
I agree. I, uh, that would be.
That's above our pay grade.
That would be a no vote.
No.
No.
Yeah, no, okay, almost there.
All right, we're gonna do one more and then our student rep has arrived.
Ah, okay, very good.
So, we're gonna do just one more and then we'll, we'll call it quits for tonight on the resolutions.
Sounds good.
We'll take the rest back up next week, this is a big one, this next one. Resolution seven, fully adjusting Chapter Seventy-eight for inflation, sponsored by the Everett School Committee. Uh, so at the end of the day, uh, if I look at this correctly, or whereas a legislative change is needed to, one, fully reflect recent inflation in the Chapter Seventy definition of the foundation in, inflation index and two, eliminate the cap in future years so as to restore the purchasing power of district foundation budgets to reflect the intended resources allocation of the Student Opportunity Act. Therefore be it resolved that M A S C calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to advance legislation mandating inflation index catch-ups to Chapter Seventy Foundation Aid that fully accounts for realized inflation that has occurred since the passage of the SOA. Be it further resolved that M A S C work with the Massachusetts Legislature to ensure in future years where realized inflation is above four point five percent annual inflation cap, in subsequent years, inflation index catch-ups are made to Chapter Seventy-eight and that realized inflation is used in the formulas to calculate Chapter Seventy-eight in perpetu- uh perpetuity.
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 That's a tough one.
Perpetuity.
So. Forever, that's right.
Forever.
So it's my understanding that we don't get a lot of help from Chapter Seventy.
Minimal?
I mean, it's, so it's ten million dollars, it's not insignificant, um, that the town receives, but um I mean, in, in terms of this uh adjusting Chapter Seventy for inflation makes a lot of sense. My guess is that the, the legislature would then just distribute the funds differently, but that would benefit us in that um we would at least get it adjusted for inflation as opposed to the one percent or so increase that we've averaged, uh, you know, over the last ten years, so um it's something, it'd be better than what we've gotten.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a yes.
Sounds like a yes.
I mean, I, I, my only concern is we become dependent on the legislature with the distribution of funds and how they're making, you know, so.
Well, we're, we, we're relying on the law they passed for Prop Two and a Half for how we can raise funds, so we're kind of stuck with that and yes, if we can get more funds from the state.
Yep.
I'm for it, I would, I would maybe like to see next year a resolution to strike down Prop Two and a Half.
Okay.
Maybe we, the Dartmouth School Committee could sponsor.
Sponsor an article.
Friendly amendment.
I like that. Start drafting, but, okay.
I'll put my lawyer hat on.
There you go.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration for those resolutions, uh, we'll take Resolution Five back and we'll continue on at the next meeting to finish those off. Uh, next up, we are gonna go back to our student representative report and my apologies, I do not have your name in front of me, so if you could introduce yourself, tell us a little, little, little bit about yourself and uh what is happening at Dartmouth High School.
All right, my name is Elizabeth O'Neill and I am a senior at Dartmouth High, I am vice president of student council and I play sports and I'm involved in clubs. And a little bit that's been going on with Dartmouth is the upcoming trick-or-treat that student council is hosting. It's on Saturday from three-thirty to five-thirty, all is welcome, we have advertised it to the elementary schools, middle school and we're hoping it's a good turnout, it's our first one, and second, we have a five K for the class of twenty-twenty-five on Sunday at ten AM. It's a great opportunity to come show up for your seniors and, I don't know, it's a good time, it's fun, it's Halloween, let's get in the spirit, I guess. Um, for upcoming events, we also have November twelfth, the N H S volleyball tournament, it's traditional, it's always a good time, yeah. Tomorrow night, we also have showcase for our seventh and eighth graders who are looking to further expand their education at Dartmouth and like any questions or anything, they should go to Dartmouth Showcase and there's gonna be people there to help them out. And we have a blood drive for October twenty-ninth, sign up, it's a great way to help save lives, it's, I don't know. It's a great way to help save lives, it's, I don't know, it's a good thing to do.
It is.
We have our PSATs Thursday for the 10th graders for who want to advance into potential placement and the 11th graders for the National Merit Scholarship, yeah. And we also have some senior nights coming up. Girls soccer is tomorrow, Tuesday, show them, I guess, like, gotta rep our seniors, let's, I mean, I'm a senior, I'm playing, like, come support. And we also have football, I think, is upcoming and...
November 1st.
Yeah, that's exciting. We also had our freshman elections this year and it was a record number of applicants. We actually did so well, I think, this year and I, it's going to be a great future, I think, for them. And we also have, oh, sports, every team is in postseason eligibility and our pink-out game we had on Friday, I think it went really well, I was there, it was a great time, we raised money and, yeah, let's see, our band performed on Saturday and Friday and they placed first, go band. I don't know much, but, you know, I, I know they're good. And our NHS has chosen the Lighthouse Animal Shelter as their charity. I think it's a really good cause. And that's all we have so far, that's upcoming for DHS.
Thank you very much for your introduction and your report. Questions, comments?
Well, thank you, that was excellent.
Good job.
Thank you.
As I say always, you're more than welcome to stay, but we understand you have some other obligations, so you're also wel- welcome to leave as well and do your homework or anything else that's going on.
Sorry, guys, it was really nice meeting you, but I do have a lot of homework.
We think you made the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, circling back here, looks on the agenda, the next up is the SMEC, Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative Quarterly Update. So I actually just sent this off to Ms. Genther to forward out to the rest of the committee so you have it, but I will just brief everyone. As you know, I am on the SMEC Board of Directors, we meet six times a year and we're supposed to report out to our school committees, our own committees quarterly. So at the last meeting in September, the board appointed yours truly from the Dartmouth School Committee to be the Chair of SMEC for the 2425 school year and Michelle Smith, thank you, Michelle Smith from Marion to be the Vice Chair. Mr. John Nunes was reappointed as, to the position of Collaborative Treasurer and Jack LeBrome was welcomed as the new board rep from Matipoiset. Three members, Mr. Carter, Mr. Shea, and Ms. Smith were appointed to review and sign warrants on behalf of the board. Board approved three recommended policy revisions to the SMEC employee handbook. The board approved updates to the FY25 spending plan and revenue projections. As of September 30th, the SMEC spending plan totals $13,093,847. Two of the collaborators' vans were declared surplus. The board reviewed the findings of a DDS quality enhancement audit that had been completed in July on the collaborative sale adult program resulting in very high compliance and quality ratings and the renewal of the program's day employment and residential support licenses. The FY24 financial audit is underway and the results will be presented at the next board meeting. Board received confirmation on the collaborator's recent experience with the DESI Financial Review Pilot, the draft of which has not been finalized or received. The board members were given DESI information and collaborative board member responsibilities. They approved, the board approved all actions, all staff actions that occurred. The director informed the board that the collaborative is due for a DESI mid-cycle program review this coming winter. The Student Services Director updated the board on current enrollment, referrals and waiting lists on the correlation, and the correlation with unified staffing vacancies. The collaborator's new early childhood public day school located in the far north end of New Bedford is also now open, which is wonderful. The director provided a brief legal and legislative update and the FY25 board calendar was approved and moved forward. Any questions on the SMEC quarterly update? And I will say that it's, they're constantly looking in ways to grow. Last year, they opened up their new center over, and new, the Dartmouth side in New Bedford Industrial Park, and they also have their new early childhood program over in the north end, because as you can imagine with the way things are going post-COVID is that there is a need for a lot of referrals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have School Committee Policies, Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments, a second reading and vote. Comments, questions, concerns? We discussed this at the, this policy at the last school committee meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the School Committee Policies, Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nunes, second by Ms. Amaral. On the motion, any further discussion? Jerrick Nuttall in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have Superintendent's Update.
Great, thank you, Mr. Oliver. So if you remember at our last meeting, we had the opportunity to share the district's strategic plan, and again, I want to thank you all for your support, it really meant so much to all of us, even, you know, those folks that were part of the planning process. It was just such a collaborative effort and when we have a moment to like step back and take a breather, you say, oh, wow, we really did accomplish a lot in kind of a short amount of time, but the time, I don't want people to think that, that we rushed it because it was not a rushed process. We truly took our time and it was partly because the district strategic planning team members agreed to meet over the summer as well, and so we knew it was important to launch the district strategic plan in the fall. And so what we're looking to do moving forward is, as part of the superintendent's update, we have thought about restructuring how we report out to you as a committee. Mr. Oliver made a great recommendation to put on the actual agenda what the focus areas are that we're going to be reporting out to, out about on a regular basis, so we're going to, we're trying that out tonight. And so what you're going to hear from the, us this evening is just that, we've broken it out by, by focus area. And so with that, we're going to start off with teaching and learning as our focus area number one, and I'm going to invite Mrs. Poveo and Dr. Tebow up. Ms. Poveo is going to update you on where we are with our literacy pilot and some other things, and then Dr. Tebow has some things that are going on at the middle school and the high school level related to teaching and learning.
Thank you. Mr. Nunes, you mentioned it before and I was like, just, you wait, I've got a little bit more for you tonight talking about our pilots, but under focus area one, teaching and learning, initiative one talks about ensuring vertical and horizontal alignment of our curriculum instructional practices pre-K to 12, and action steps one and two are talking in that, under that initiative, about the development and implementation of a curriculum review cycle as well as identifying and piloting and implementing high-quality research-based curriculum pre-K to 12. And so I just wanted to give you some updates on things we've done sort of in service of those action steps. Our pilot, as Dr. Sabre McGuire mentioned, is in full swing. Our folks actually switched today from EL Education and started CKLA and they've done a great job. They really have been a very, very diligent and really just thorough group. As a matter of fact, they are heading, hitting the road on Friday. We're heading to Barrington Public Schools who uses EL Education and has graciously invited us into their, one of their elementary schools to see EL in action and then talk with teachers after that, ask questions, debrief, speak with their leadership and their coaches about what they see, and then we are hopefully going to be doing the same in Barnstable, which is using the other program. So they really are just, just, I can't, I can't emphasize enough how diligent and seriously they take the process and I'm very, very grateful for their dedication to the cause. Also, sort of in service of that action step, we have our, our, I'm losing the word I'm looking for, we put out our sort of email to folks asking for volunteers to work on our curriculum teams, and at the elementary level, we have curriculum teams in all four core subject areas, and they really do a lot of that work in the curriculum review cycle. They are revising, reviewing, and in the case of ELA, piloting and looking for new high-quality instructional materials that align to the standards that are in alignment with what we're doing at the elementary level. And then in their, under Teaching Learning Initiative Two, which talks about designing professional development learning opportunities and that are relevant and support professional growth for all educators and staff, on Wednesday of this week, we have an after-school meeting where our elementary folks are going to be engaging in the first of a seven-part series on the science of reading. Last week, we met with a consultant from Teaching Learning Alliance. Our elementary assistant principals and coaches are doing Train the Trainer Model where the facilitator comes in and works with our folks, build the capacity within our own team, and then we take that information and go out. We are grounding our work in the book called Shifting the Balance. It's shifting from a balanced literacy to a, the real true core science of reading and really hoping to build the understanding and the why so that as we bring in a new literacy program, it's not just a new program for the sake of a new program, it's grounded in research, it's grounded in why the knowledge-based program supports the science of reading and the brain science of how students learn how to read. So I will turn it over to Dr. Tebow to talk about some of the work going on at the secondary level.
Thank you, Mrs. Poveo. So similar to the elementary level, there are several curriculum pilots that are underway at the secondary level, starting with Dartmouth Middle School who is piloting Open SciEd, which is a science program, an inquiry-based science program. So our associate principal, Sarah Deekus, has taken the lead along with all of our science teachers at the middle school and they're piloting one module in the science areas, so that's underway. I spoke with Mr. Rossi today who said it's going well, teachers are really buying in and Mrs. Deekus is doing a nice job with that. Also at Dartmouth Middle School and Dartmouth High School where we have our Spanish pilot underway with the SOMOS curriculum, which is a competency or proficiency-based curriculum, so it's a little bit different way of more language instruction from your traditional grammar-based approach. And so they met earlier this month, right here actually, in this area. It was nice, the teachers reported that it was nice to have time to collaborate, you know, especially our middle school and high school teachers together, you know, so again, that's the horizontal and vertical alignment piece, and so it's nice to see, and I just want to thank Mrs. Hillary Souza who really took the lead, she modeled some of the activities that both her and Senora Chamberlain have, have done with the new SOMOS curriculum, so we appreciate their work on that. Finally, at the high school, in terms of curriculum pilots, we have Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two underway with Carnegie Learning, and as I mentioned the last time I provided an update, it is a tremendous amount of work that our teachers are engaging in, planning work. Anytime, you know, you're implementing a new curriculum, you're learning the curriculum, you know, early in the year, you're still learning your kids and your students, and so there's a lot, it's a heavy load on the teachers and we certainly appreciate their hard work. They're working, you know, in addition to Ms. Chavie here at the high school being on-site support, they're also working with a Carnegie math coach, Patty Schute, who visited for three days in October. During her visits, she visited classrooms, observed our teachers and the instruction and action, met with our teachers to debrief afterwards, she facilitated a common planning time with our teachers focused on, you know, making some key decisions around pacing and scope and sequence related to the Carnegie learning math curriculum. In addition to that, Ms. Brittingham, our instructional technology specialist, has been a tremendous support as well because Mathia, which is the interactive AI component of the math instruction, is very tech-heavy, very tech-based, and so having Mrs. Brittingham here onsite is a tremendous support in terms of integrating the technology, which is a good segue for the next piece I wanted to, to mention, which is MasQ. Last week, we had several Dartmouth High, or Dartmouth Public Schools, I should say, educators who presented at the conference, and so Mr. Oliver was in attendance and he certainly got to see some of them, but I just wanted to thank and give a shout out and let the community know that you are well-represented by your Dartmouth Public Schools educators, they're, they're well-respected throughout the state, and so Mr. Eric Bosworth, Ms. Laura Gardner, Liz Vossi, Sandra Chica, Jess Brittingham, they all presented on various topics related to technology integration, so I'd like to recognize them. And of course, one of the highlights was Ms. Brittingham who presented the marriage of technology and curriculum with a special guest comedic performance by none other than Mr. Galishaw who served as the justice of the peace to administer the wedding ceremony for technology and curriculum, so you can imagine that. So in all seriousness, it was, each of those presenters did a phenomenal job and represented Dartmouth Public Schools very well. I wanted to also provide an update to the committee on, I had mentioned earlier this year, the Playbook Initiative that we'd be applying once again to be part of that exciting work. We did apply, I want to thank Tia Rad, who was one of the trainers last year, and also Audrey Kircher, who's one of the trainers this year along with Tia Rad. They, those two students really had to work quite hard to submit several essays as part of the application process. We will find out, I reached out to the Project 351 and the Playbook Initiative today actually, and they will be announcing on Friday, they'll be notifying which districts were selected. So fingers crossed, hopefully we'll be selected to participate again. Also want to thank Mrs. Chamberlain, Mr. Rossi down at the middle school, Ms. Chavie here at the high school, Mrs. Massari, Mr. Garcia, and Mr. Sullivan. All of those educators had a hand in the application process, so it's quite a collaborative effort and we really appreciate their hard work. I don't want to miss anything, a couple, just two other things. We have a expo tomorrow at Dartmouth Middle School where members of the high school Business Information and Technology Department are going to be traveling down to the middle school to kind of help engage with our middle school students so that they can see what some of the opportunities are here at the high school. So it'll be things like, you know, Mr. Paradi's program, our computer science program, some of our engineering programs with, you know, Mr. Martin, Mr. Brodsky Robotics, it's that kind of expo so that our middle school students can start to see all of the different opportunities that are available to them here at Dartmouth High School, which is good coordination for tomorrow night, which I know our student rep just mentioned, but we have our showcase evening here at the high school tomorrow night, I believe it's 5:30 to 6:30, and that's open to the class of 2029 and the class of 2030, which is our grade seven and our grade eight, which is a little bit scary. My oldest is in the class of 2030 and that seems so far away just a short time ago, but they're about to be freshmen in just two years, so I think, oh, one other thing that we wanted to mention, we, we shared today the Dartmouth Public Schools Leadership Fellowship Program, which is a opportunity, again, aligned to our strategic plan, but it's an opportunity to help us grow and develop leaders within our Dartmouth Public Schools. It's open to any educator who wants to be part of that, can, can apply, but the benefit of that beyond the PDPs and, you know, some great leadership experiences, they'll work closely with a coach from the Lynch Leadership Academy who's also partnering with the administrative team and leadership team in the district to, to do some professional learning work with us. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
So I just want to take a moment, just to thank, you know, obviously there's a lot of hard work going on in the district and our teachers who are piloting and our curriculum, there's a lot of hard work that goes into piloting new resources, and so we just can't thank them enough for being willing to kind of step out of your comfort zone, you know, because we get used to doing the things that we've done for a while, and these are the folks that are really willing to kind of take a step and hopefully lead us forward because we know that we have to address this as a school community. So thank you to both Ross and Katie who are doing a great job leading those efforts out in the district. So this past week, we... So this past week, we held our principals' meeting, and we had a district leadership team meeting, both focusing on leadership teaming with the DLT, District Leadership Team. We focused on the district's strategic plan. Something that's really important to us is that everybody starts to have a really deep understanding of what's in the plan. And so we're going to be a broken record for a while about that, going out to schools, going out to, we have a family forum, I'll mention that again on Wednesday evening. But in addition to that, we added a component to our meetings with our principals, where school leadership, and in this past, this case of this past week, Mr. Rossi was able to share information with the principal and central office leadership team about the middle school. And then we split up and we visited classrooms. And it was a really powerful experience, not only for us as central office leaders, I mean, we get into classrooms quite frequently, but at times, we don't get into sort of, you know, a variety of classrooms, depending on what our area focuses in the district. And we were able to visit many classrooms. I think our teachers were welcoming. They certainly didn't appear to be intimidated by the, the sort of, what's the word, barrage? That's probably not the quite the word. And I'm sure Mr. Rossi had them quite, they knew we were coming. But again, that's the type of work that we're going to continue to do as we, each one of our principals' meetings is hosted in a different school. And so we're going to give the school leadership an opportunity to talk about what's unique about that, their particular school, and get into classrooms. And I have to say, the elementary principals, how exciting was it for them to get into classrooms, see some of their former students, making those connections? The kids were super excited to see them. And then for Mr. Shea, to see his future student body. And so making those connections really incredibly important. So we'll be doing that throughout the school year. Also, with the approval of the district's strategic plan, I want to mention that we're moving forward with designing the template for our school improvement plans, and that will serve as the basis for our schools to develop their own individual school plans, but will be very closely aligned with the district's strategic plan. The high school will be the first one out, because they're actually going through a NEASC visit, and they need to be able to develop and present their school improvement plan. And in turn, we'll be inviting them to school committee, as you have in the past, to present their strategic plans, their school improvement plans, to you as a committee. And so I said we're going to split it up by sort of focus areas. So Mr. Kylie knows that I moved budget and capital improvement up, because we didn't want to end on it. And sadly, he said, "I know, I always feel like I'm, you know, giving the downer information." But just before he jumps in, I just want to mention that we are still, and I'm going to use this section to update you on where we are with personnel moves, and we're still in need of an ELL teacher at Dartmouth High School to be shared with Dartmouth Middle School. Just a reminder that we put out a job ad for a substitute just last week, and we did put it under substitute teacher preference for an EL teacher. But at this point, we really do need a certified teacher to start working with our students, because they deserve and they need to have the services that we are actually required to provide. So with that, monitor substitute teachers, ESPs, custodians, all those things, we're still hiring. So keep that in mind. And then Mr. Kylie, I know, has an update on town meeting and to talk a little bit about capital improvements.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So we were pleased that last week at town meeting, we received support for all of our capital improvement articles that were on the warrant. So technology hardware replacement, bathroom renovations, interior and exterior painting, energy efficiency projects, and music equipment and generator replacement. So all things that we're getting going and starting on. And while we're doing that, we're also beginning preparations. We sent out, I sent out some preliminary information to the administrators in the district about beginning to prepare the FY '26 through '35 capital improvement plan, a 10-year plan. So we're starting that process, and we'll move forward and we'll keep you posted as we develop that plan.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to a little bit out of order, but safe and supportive schools. So I'm going to invite Mrs. Denicio and Mrs. Redlon up. They're going to talk to you about some of the work that we have going on in the district related to safe and supportive schools.
Are my pictures coming? I'm nothing without my visuals. So I'm just here to share actually a little bit of good news. Last Friday, October 11th, Dartmouth Public Schools was named Unified Champion School District. This means that our schools at each level fulfill the requirement of being a Special Olympics champion school. There you go. Thank you. In order to receive this designation, a school must demonstrate whole-school engagement with activities that promote respect and social inclusion, inclusive youth leadership, encouraging students with and without disabilities to take leadership roles, and provide various opportunities for unified sports. Only nine districts in the state of Massachusetts have received this designation, so it's kind of a big deal. And pictured here, you see John Bro, Mike Capello, and Ashley Coker-Pierpont, who worked tirelessly to support unified sports in the district. And actually, they were presenting at a conference and were sort of surprised with this award before their presentation. So it was really a very cool thing for Dartmouth, and just more evidence that we're already starting the work of being, you know, an inclusive school district. And of course, there's always more to do. So just to show you a little bit more of what that looks like.
Okay, so here are some pictures of teams from last year that are either currently getting going or will be going on in the spring. So this was from our Special Olympics Day last spring at Tabor Academy with our elementary students. Here's some more fun activities that they were doing. And this is the middle school Unified Bocce. So this is last year's. But they are currently, they have a jamboree coming up next week, so that will be fun. And then last year's middle school Unified Basketball Team. The high school's Unified Bowling Team, which I'm really excited for, to watch this. I've never seen Unified Bowling, so. And then their Unified Basketball Team. That's not right? Okay, I'll just leave it up. And then coming up on November 7th, we'll have a Unified Athletes Day, or our Unified Athletes here at the high school will host the preschoolers from Cushman and Potter for Young Athletes Day. So the Unified PE class and Unified Athletes have created this whole day for our preschoolers, so they'll come up here, they'll do some activities, and then head back. So that should be a really fun time for them. And then shifting gears a little bit away from the unified sports, but under safe and supportive schools, so we are creating a district crisis response team. So this will include members of central office, representatives from each school, from nursing, social workers, administrators, as well as representatives from Dartmouth Fire and Dartmouth Police. So our first meeting will be on November 6th. So we're going to start there, do some info gathering, see where everybody's at, and then we're excited to share out updates as we get going.
Thank you.
We also just want to mention that we had more interest in joining the district crisis team than just about any team that we've had, that we've created in the Dartmouth schools. So people obviously are committed to engaging in this work. And if you remember, last week, we talked about how this team would then drive the work at the school level. So we'll continue to develop what that is going to look like and present to you as that becomes clearer. Mr. Kylie, you going to add something?
Sure, just, yeah, thank you, thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So just in terms of safe and supportive schools, this Wednesday, October 23rd, we'll be advertising for design services for the DeMello and Potter School Fire Alarm Systems. So we did preliminary study work already, just to have an idea of what the scope of the project is, and we'll be moving forward with design. So we will be, the packets will be available for designers to ask for the request for proposal and then submit to us in a couple of weeks. So October 23rd, though, it'll be available to be requested.
So those are the kinds of things that kind of go unnoticed in a school district, and yet at the same time, we recognize that, again, making sure that we have effective fire detection systems and fire alarms and the appropriate safety and security protocols in place are really critical on a daily basis of ensuring that we do, in fact, provide a safe and supportive environment for our students.
It's certainly helpful as well for not only us, but our community members.
To hear. Yep. And then, thank you, Mr. Oliver. And then closing with family and community engagement, again, our fourth year focus area. And I have to say, boy, was Dartmouth a busy place this weekend, right? Lots going on, lots of great things going on that involve the community. And so there are many ways in which we want to be intentional about how we engage the community in our schools. This past weekend, beginning with Friday afternoon and into the evening, the soccer players were recognized, the seniors at their game, followed by the senior girls at the volleyball game. Both teams won, so that's really great news. We also had the seniors from the Council on Aging at our football game. They had a nice little section for themselves, and I have to say again, I'm so impressed with their stamina, because they stay through the whole game from beginning to end. I just want to thank a couple of people, Nancy, Amy, Andy, Rebecca Braga, they're the ones who really made that happen. And the relationship between the cheerleaders and the seniors is just so sweet. And seniors, I don't mean the senior students in this case, I'm talking about our seniors that are part of the Council on Aging. And it really does set a powerful example of how we're connecting generations in the Dartmouth community. And if you remember, that is something that's part of our vision, our mission and our vision. That same evening, just across the street, actually across the field, we had, oh, by the way, the football team won too, and it was a statement win. That's what we call that, kind of win against, yes. So Mr. Rossi was impressed that I knew that lingo. So the same evening, just across the field, Quinn hosted its most popular ever trunk-or-treat event. Dr. Thomas sent me photos, and it is impressive, but there were as many as 40 cars there that evening, and many family, staff, and students showed up. Again, the photos were incredibly impressive. At some point, I'll share them with you if you're interested, because people really do invest a lot of time and effort into creating this just incredible Halloween setting in the parking lot of our elementary school. And so other schools are following suit. You heard our students talk about, our high school students are doing this on Saturday, but the DeMello and the Potter are also planning trunk-or-treat events. Dartmouth this weekend hosted the World Band Competition this past Saturday evening. I know Mr. Nunes is going to talk about that, but I have to say, it was an incredible evening. I made a joke to the crowd, saying, I had to tell a few people. They said, "What are you doing Saturday evening?" And I said, "Well, I'm going to a high school band competition." And I had some sympathetic looks. And what I said to the group that I had the opportunity to speak to on Saturday evening was, it was a wonderful evening, like showcasing so much talent. And there was all on the field with, of course, I'm going to say, the greatest talent being our Dartmouths High School band. And I know Mr. Nunes will talk about how they turned out. But I do have to say, pulling up to football is also a little intimidating if you're looking for a parking spot. And the band, pulling up to the band competition, if you can imagine, was even more so. It took me a while to find a parking spot, Mr. Nunes.
I will remember next year to make sure you have a spot reserved.
Well, that isn't, no, that wasn't my, that wasn't my reason, but I'll take it. But no, it was, but it's really fun to see how many people do turn out, is more, is my greater point here. So again, an inexpensive evening of music, and there was somebody who actually sang. Really incredible evening. So as far as our, I have to mention our multimedia students, Mr. Paradi, who does such a wonderful job encouraging the students to get out there and be noticed. But the media students placed in top three for a couple of categories of the Mass DOT video contest. They are going to attend the awards ceremony on Wednesday to find out exactly where they placed. The students had to write and produce a 30- to 60-second video about, for the local community, about having empathy at intersections and on the roadway. And I think that that's a particularly relevant topic for all of us, not just here in Dartmouth, but throughout the state. We also found out just today that one group of media students placed in the top 24 for the annual MIAA Sportsmanship Essay Multimedia Contest. They had to produce a video answering the question. "As a high school student, you are a role model for younger athletes who look up to you. Why is it important to display good sportsmanship to younger athletes? Provide three examples of demonstrating good sportsmanship on and off the field." So really great, relevant questions for not only our older students to think about, but in order for them to mentor our younger students. So there is an expo tomorrow morning, as you already heard. We have students very involved with lots of different things. And I think the important thing to remind you, us all of, is that the showcase is tomorrow night. There's lots of, the high school showcase, there's lots of great things that happen here in Dartmouth, and certainly at Dartmouth High School. And we want to encourage our middle school families to come to the high school to check out what we have to offer here, because we want our Dartmouth students at Dartmouth High School. And so with that, oh, and the community forum is Wednesday evening. That will be here at the high school in the auditorium. Is it at 6:00 or 7:00?
Six.
Six, at 6:00 PM. But we put that out. We want to thank, we want to thank Magnolia through our town office, who is helping us to put the word out, so that it goes beyond the school district, but also includes community members who may be interested in hearing more about our plan. And so that's it for this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I just want to comment on, thank you for really bringing to life, you know, that each person within your, like, central office leadership team serves such an integral, critical purpose. And often, I mean, I haven't really heard any criticisms of late, but previous to your tenure, we are used to hearing from principals, and it's so valuable. But then there's like that one step back that really helps really impact, you know, what others are doing. And it left me thinking, gosh, like, we are, how does, how do you all do it? All that you're doing, and it's not just sitting at a desk and answering a phone, it's really just playing a critical purpose. And thank you for bringing that to life.
Thank you. We have an incredible team here in Dartmouth, and central office leadership is certainly much talented, dedicated, go above and beyond. And beyond that, our entire district leadership team, you know, we are very fortunate here to have such a committed group of folks. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. And I do, I do like the format as well.
Yes, it was helpful to put that on the agenda too, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Report of the chair, I think I've spoken enough this evening, so I have nothing more to share, so I will turn it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, you know, our student rep talked about it as the Dr. Saban McGuire, but we had our home band competition Saturday night. We had 13 bands. Yes, it was packed.
It was packed.
And there was no doubt about it. Everyone enjoyed themselves type of deal. We got the high score for the night. We got the high score for the night, 93-8. We took first place, took all the captions and such. Headed off to Stoughton Saturday night for the Massachusetts Rhode Island State Championship, was scheduled to be on somewhere around 8 o'clock and such. And then, you know, the following week, we've got senior night on November 1st, and then on Saturday, we head off to MetLife for national championships that we go down to every year, you know, go down and come back. So I don't have a time yet, they've got a block set up somewhere like between 4:00 and 7:00, you know, our division's going to be on, and then awards right after, so it won't be a late night, thank God, you know, to come home.
Right.
And such, we won't do that. And I just, seriously, I, you know, and I'm going to embarrass them, but that's all right. I just want to thank seriously Dr. Tebow for coming down to the Madera Feast Grounds last week. We had a number of students in from high school in the Madera Islands from Santana, which is a village, and they were champions. They did some microbiology design. I'm not going there, that's way over my, that was way over my expertise type of deal. But they explained things, like, got the opportunity to, you know, get Dr. Tebow down to our Museum of Maderan Heritage for him to take a walk around and then, you know, see some of the pictures and, you know, the artifacts and things that we have from Madera there. So I just want to, you know, good, it was a good evening, so thank you, sir. That's all I have as the chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nunes. Anyone else? All right. Well, with that, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, November 4th, 2024, same time, same place. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mrs. Amor, on the motion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.[1760.87]